Well, over in the Westlake District, another development is taking shape, but this one is being welcomed with open arms by the whole community. As Gil Reyes explains, Mosaic Gardens at Westlake will soon be home to more than 100 lucky tenants.
A picturesque plot of land overlooking First Street and Glendale Boulevard is the future site of much-needed affordable housing for seniors, the working poor, and the chronically homeless.
It's really hard to find the words to express that this development will have such an impact on the lives of these various populations. I think we're creating hope for people who've had a hard life.
Link Housing, Councilman Mitch O'Farrell and friends break ground on the Mosaic Gardens at Westlake Apartments. When it opens in a couple of years, it will house 125 units, more than half of them reserved for the chronically homeless.
We need all hands on deck for this affordable housing crises, and it is a crisis of the highest magnitude facing this city, facing this county.
Councilman Mitch O'Farrell represents the section of the Westlake District. He says L.A. County's apartment availability rate is low, at just 2.7%. Making matters worse, rents for these scarce one-bedroom apartments have surged in recent years.
The average rent in my district is much higher than $2,000 per month, but the average household income still hovers around $38,000 a year, so my own constituents can't afford to technically even live in my own district.
The city and county of L.A. are plotting on ways to build more affordable housing. L.A. voters could be asked to approve one or more measures this fall to fund future projects. In the Westlake District, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Mosaic Gardens at Westlake will also offer physical, mental health, and job placement services for tenants. Rents will dip as low as $528 a month. While a suspect is arrested in connection with a series of break-ins and attempted sexual assaults, a couple of new parklets brings the community together in Palms, and new synthetic soccer fields in the San Fernando Valley kick into high gear. All these stories in City B. A suspect wanted in connection with several home robberies and attempted sexual assaults in Echo Park, East Hollywood and Silver Lake, was arrested one day after officials offered a $35,000 reward for information leading to his arrest and conviction. The suspect was caught on surveillance video in at least eight cases since the first one took place on August 1st.
We need to send a very strong message that this behavior will not be tolerated.
Two new parklets were unveiled in the community of Palms. These parklets, which also feature a garden, are located a block apart on Motor Avenue. They were proposed by Mayor Eric Garcetti and supported by Councilmember Paul Caress, as well as the Palms community. Officials say they'll provide much-needed restful and pleasant gathering places for the greater neighborhood.
It's so beautiful. It's a pretty little oasis in the middle of a busy city.
So food is being grown, and people sit and socialize, but they can also grab a strawberry and eat it at the same time.
Say goodbye to dirt and rock as three new synthetic turf soccer fields begin to take shape at Witset Fields Park. The Department of Recreation and Parks, along with Councilmember Paul Krikorian, held a groundbreaking ceremony to mark the beginning of the project. The large existing soccer fields, as well as two smaller ones, will be renovated. The synthetic fields will increase water conservation efforts and provide a new and consistent playing surface for soccer players of all ages.
This is going to be the model of soccer facilities for the San Fernando Valley.
If you're a senior and you have a computer, well, you're one of the lucky ones. You can share photos of your grandchildren and talk with them online, but many other low-income seniors can't do that because they don't have a computer. As Gil Reyes shows us, the city is hoping to change that. Gil?
Well, Yana, as you know, we've covered extensively the rollout of these free Our Cycle computers in low-income neighborhoods, also at summer camp for disadvantaged children, but this is the first such rollout in a low-income housing community for seniors, so they too could bridge the digital divide. How do you feel?
Yeah, I'm so happy.
Young Ju Burnett is among the 90 tenants in the senior living community in Jefferson Park, receiving free computers, Wi-Fi included.
They all go through a computer training course, which they just finished, and we'll actually be assisting them inside their units, hooking up the computers to make sure they're 100% working and they're ready to be used.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's the latest giveaway in the Our Cycle L.A. program. Our Cycle has taken thousands of old City of L.A. computers, and instead of throwing them away, repairs them for people in need. The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, came up with the idea. It hired the nonprofit group Human IT to do the repairs, and together, they work with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles to find recipients.
Not only do you have inter-agency collaboration here, but you have summer youth workers earning $10.50 an hour, just gaining valuable experience, helping us distribute this technology. So, I mean, it's a perfect marriage of all these sort of entities coming together for a really good cause.
Johann Palacios, a paid student intern from Contreras Learning Academy, is also helping the mostly Korean-American tenants reconnect with family back in Korea through email. Many of them have never owned a computer. This class teaches the basics.
We should, like, get back to the community. Doesn't matter, like, to who. It's just, as long as you do something helpful, like, personally, I feel like really good about it.
A lot of people are physically disabled, so they can't leave this location, so now they really have the world at their fingertips.
By finally entering the digital age. In Jefferson Park, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Since its launch a year and a half ago, Our Cycle has given away refurbished computers to underserved areas in Koreatown, Baldwin Village, and San Pedro. Well, turning now to the Port of L.A., where a gateway to the sea has opened for students at Cal State Dominguez Hills and Harbor College, and it's a chance for them to take the plunge at one of the largest and busiest ports. Rasha Goel has more.
And in fact, many of us, like myself, were the first in our families to graduate from college, and also, I was the first in my family to get a graduate degree. I've met a lot of the students and their families, and we have a lot of similarities.
And that's why Executive Director at the Port of Los Angeles, Jean Sirocca, is hoping that the signing of this memorandum of understanding with California State University Dominguez Hills and Los Angeles Harbor College will help boost interest in a career at the Port of L.A.
They're teaming up with the Port of Los Angeles to ensure our students enter the job market prepared, competitive, and confident.
The agreement will train students who are interested in careers in port operations and logistics.
Our students from the community, at whatever level and whatever their career goals may be, is certainly going to benefit from this great opportunity.
Fifteen paid internships will be available to students who are studying global logistics or a related field. In addition, employees from the Port of Los Angeles will also visit both campuses as guest lecturers.
And we'll ask the students what their likes and dislikes are, so we can match up maybe some areas of strength with what our department wants to do, but also if there's area that needs improvement and they want to really hone up on certain skills, we can maybe match that skill set up as well.
Officials say it's truly a rare opportunity to work one-on-one with port professionals and learn firsthand from their experiences.
This kind of partnership, a partnership between a community college, a four-year college, and a business industry, that's not the norm, but it should be. And what we're hoping is that this MOU and what we're doing will serve as a model for other industry leaders to engage in.
And for today, it's the first step in engaging and exposing students to jobs right in their own backyard. In San Pedro, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The Port of L.A. facilitates more than 133,000 jobs in the city of L.A. and 2.8 million jobs nationwide. Well, from a career on the sea to a career in the sciences, if your child has a knack for math and research, they could help find cures for deadly diseases through a program at Cedar Sinai. Gil Reyes reports on stem cell research as a cutting-edge career.
Come back over, don't be shy.
High school kids aspiring to be doctors and scientists one day get to live out their dreams for a week, working in professional laboratories over the summer.
It's the type of work that usually people my age don't get the chance to do, so it's honestly a great experience to go and use resources that aren't really available to people my age.
Cedar Sinai Medical Center opens its research labs to around 20 L.A. Unified High School students during its minors in research program.
We have a one-week time for the students to immerse themselves in stem cells in the laboratory and see our scientists working day-to-day and how we're using stem cells to both treat and model human diseases.
Clive Svensson of the Regenerative Medicine Institute calls stem cell research "the most cutting-edge area of science." It makes the use of pluripotent stem cells, which can be programmed to produce any cell in the human body. This could one day cure Crohn's disease, juvenile diabetes, spinal cord injuries, even baldness. These young people could be administering treatments one day. Today, they're apprentices.
So, we break them up into groups of two or three, and we pair them with scientists from the institute, and they will have a project that they will work on in the laboratory.
At the end of the week, the interns will present their findings to around 100 professional scientists. Palisades Charter High School student Orben Shlomo calls it "a chance of a lifetime."
And so, actual lab experience, hands-on, with a mentor is great, and I also get a paper out of it in the end, so I got my name on a paper published in some magazine, and that's great.
Great, all right, and just a sample of greater things to come for these budding young scientists. At Cedar Sinai Medical Center, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Cedar Sinai is home to one of the top institutes for stem cell research, research that might one day also cure Alzheimer's and heart disease. But being able to find those cures begins early by laying the groundwork for good study habits. As the new school year gets underway, it's important that kids have the supplies they need to learn and excel. As Anna Marcos shows us, some kids in Watts are off to a great start.
In Watts, getting kids ready for another school year is reason enough for a block party. This one, the Watts Back-to-School Community Block Party, has become a seven-year tradition. One of the highlights, a backpack giveaway for 550 lucky schoolchildren.
Well, what's gonna happen is, they don't have to cry when they go to school the first day, with other children having backpacks, and they don't have any backpacks, and it makes it look as if nobody cares about them because the parents is not working and they can't do it.
Many kids and families in the neighborhood come from poverty or disadvantaged backgrounds, and a backpack full of school supplies is a pretty big deal.
To see the joy and the expressions of joy on these kids' faces, as well as the parents, it just does my heart good. This community has endured a lot.
To sweeten the deal, event organizers are also giving the kids a $5 coupon to start a savings account. Enticements to do well in school? Definitely.
We know for research that a kid that starts savings at a very early age, they have seven times more chances to finish college, so that's why it's so important for us to create that habit.
It makes them have the love when they go back into the classroom, not the hate, because if you have love, you won't bother people, but if you go in there with hate, you're not gonna study too well and get along with the rest of them.
A little folk wisdom, a backpack, some face painting, and some burgers. Sounds like the recipe for a great start to a brand-new school year. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Now, in addition to supplies, books also play a huge role in our students' success, but did you know that 31 million children in the U.S. don't have access to books in their home, including those right here in L.A.? But as Gil Reyes reports, generous donations are helping to change that. And this is the back of the book.
Storytime at the Women, Infants, and Children Center in Watts comes with a surprise this week: free children's books for center recipients like Kayvon Rotan and her kids.
Um, I love it. It's, it's, my kids love to read. I love to read to them, you know, it's just awesome.
The giveaway courtesy of the Books Across America Program. Books Across America is an effort announced on the Dr. Oz Show to deliver much-needed books to families in need. In a week's time, in May, 45,000 books nationwide were collected.
People were really generous. We were so surprised, and the WIC Centers, over 700 of them, are distributing them to low-income families, so they're getting it in the hands of moms, dads, caregivers of children under the age of five, which is exactly what we wanted.
Renee Frazier of Frazier Communications says reading to kids during those first five years is critical for successful childhood development and academic success. Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC Centers like this one, primarily offer food services to struggling families, but opened its doors for the book giveaway as another way to help. This WIC Center is located in the Watts Health Center.
A good majority of our patients, but WIC is open to the community. We have actually five WIC sites.
Sandra Brooks is children's librarian at the nearby Watts Library. She has advice for parents beyond books.
If you're having a problem reading to your child, pick up a newspaper, or a book, or just tell them what you're doing. You don't have to do anything special. If you're doing something, you're going to the grocery store, and you're making a list, tell them, "I'm putting milk on this list, I'm putting bananas on this list." Children love to hear your voice, so always talk to them.
And help ensure their future success. In Watts, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The Dr. Oz Show worked with First Five California and UPS to collect and deliver the books all across the country. Well, LAX has gone to the dogs, but that's a good thing if you travel with your beloved four-legged friend. Rasha Goel shows us how LAX is giving our canine companions the first-class treatment.
Don't worry about stepping into it, because LAX is taking care of it. Eight indoor animal relief stations and three outdoor stations are now open at LAX, and will give our four-legged friends and passengers some relief while waiting for their flights.
Our guests that are traveling with service animals and pets will now have the convenience of staying inside our terminal concourses, not having to leave their boarding areas for their pets to be relieved and go through security. So this is a very effective and efficient way of our passengers being able to come through security one time, and then, when needed, have a facility here for their pets to find relief.
With a total of 11 stations, LAX has the highest number of animal relief stations in any other airport in the United States. And not only will these stations be helpful for the passengers, but they'll also be helpful for the dogs that work here.
The opening of the stations coincided with this year's National Work Like a Dog Day, which gave airport officials an opportunity to honor service, law enforcement, and therapy animals at LAX.
Our pups roam throughout the terminals to provide affection and comfort that, again, relieves some of the stress and anxiety that some passengers experience when traveling through airports.
LAX's pup program, or Pets Un-stressing Passengers, currently has 55 volunteer dogs and is the largest therapy dog program among all U.S. airports.
They just really needed to be with the dog, and they couldn't believe there was one at LAX of all places.
With the relief stations, LAX is returning the love that our animal friends give us every day. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Now, if you want more information on where the relief stations are located, visit While an art exhibit highlights the creative flair of L.A. artists, grab your family and friends for an outdoor movie screening in Silver Lake, and if you ever wanted to spend more time at Grand Central Market, well, now you can. All this in this week's Things to Do. As part of an ongoing series, Made in L.A. 2016, A, The Though Only, highlights the practices of artists working throughout Los Angeles and the surrounding areas. It addresses Los Angeles as a center of activity and reveals how artists move fluidly between contexts and respond to their local conditions. Made in L.A. 2016 extends into dance, fashion, literature, music, film, and performance. It closes on August 28th, so don't miss it. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. Join the Silver Lake Picture Show for its 15th anniversary screening of Super Troopers. As always, show up early for free musical performance and short film from local artists to get the best spot and to eat delicious food from local restaurants. The screening takes place on September 1st at 7:00 p.m. at the Sunset Triangle Plaza located at 1523 Griffith Park Boulevard. For more, visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Ever wanted to enjoy Grand Central Market a little bit longer? Well, now you can, as it launches Summer Nights by expanding their hours every evening until 10:00 p.m. Along with special programming, you can expect live music, evening menu specials, a massive happy hour, and free shuttle services to a wide range of entertainment venues. Most of the market's vendors will remain open until the very end, so take your time, sit back, and relax. For more, visit grandcentralmarket.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road. Don't worry, Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide. Open wide.
Report to the council chambers, sergeants call them.
Okay, good morning, good morning. Wanna welcome you to, uh, your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Again, today is August, uh, 26th, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Madam Clerk, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Price moves. Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Fuentes moves. Mr. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file 1B, J, K, L, and U, and as much as the liens are paid in full, and also to receive and file 1A, and as much as the property is owner-occupied, single-family, and exempt from lien processing, reduce the lien to 1H to $3,373.09, and the lien for 1T to $3,265.40 due to partial payment, and to receive and file 1G after reducing the lien to $1,308.80, and finally, to continue 1Q to October 21st, 2016, sir.
Okay, so with, uh, without objection, that will be the order. Would you please continue?
Item 1 is an item notice for a public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, there are cards on that.
Okay, then continue.
Items 2 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held, and Mr. President, the committee report for item number 2 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, members specials? Well then, let's, uh, prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you, continue.
Mr. President, items 5 through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, uh, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, and 14, sir.
Let's hold those items, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
Hold item 10.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is it ever a request to hold item 10?
Okay, we have to vote on reconsideration, right?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the, uh, reconsideration on item 10. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, so we'll hold that on the desk until you're ready to, uh, uh, deal with it, Mr. Harris Dawson. That brings us where?
That brings council to items called special or presentation, sir.
Okay, Mr. Previn, come forward. We're going to, uh, we're gonna give you, you have items 1, 11, 13, and 14. You will get, uh, 4 minutes on those items, and then 1 minute on your general public comment. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, Council President Wesson. It is Eric Previn, uh, here in, uh, the new section that is the multiple agenda items. So, uh, item number 1, it caught my attention that in the, uh, the section on liens on various properties, one is in CD2 on Radford Avenue, North Radford. Uh, and, you know, I had a conversation with a member of the department, uh, who runs this operation, uh, the Building and Safety Department, and, you know, we're, we're in a, a trove of older, uh, violations that is, is resulting in some PR problems in the city. People don't like, uh, being tagged for things that were never enforced in the first place. It just creates a bad feeling, and I don't think that the, I'm not sure that the revenue result is worth the, the negative feedback that you're, you're taking on this, sir. You know that, uh, folks bring it up on a regular basis, and I just think, uh, you should consider revising that scope and move forward in a slightly different direction, especially since they are, uh, poorly administered, many of these things, and it just, it, it, it's a road to nowhere. That's all I can pretty much say on that. Item number 11, uh, is an item where you have, uh, you have, Price and Buscaino have 2 items, actually, that they are, uh, bringing forward about some crimes, and I'm very interested, maybe somebody from L.A. PD or, or otherwise could speak about what these crimes are like, but they involve cellphone stores. MetroPCS, uh, is one where there was a specific robbery, and then they, I think to be fair to all the other chains, have reached out to several of the other chains. What, what, uh, let's notify the public, let's get somebody together from the staff to bring forward what exactly is going on, so that the public can protect themselves if that's going on. Nothing wrong with Buscaino, as you know, with a reward. If it will bring out the people, that's great, but let's, let's at least get the information squared away. Item number 13, sir, uh, is in great CD8, the Harris Dawson section, and I, you know, I am pleased to have a new member of the council in this space, and this is awesome. This is a group called the Ross Group, and what they're gonna be carrying out here, sir, with, uh, some of his support, I think, is a community and business outreach. Now, community outreach and business outreach are sometimes defined separately, as opposed to together. So the Ross Group is which? Are they working for the businesses like the Venice Improvement District, um, that we, Business Improvement District, where we had the controversial ballot last week, yesterday, where they wouldn't reveal the vote and all that weirdness, or is it more of an actual community group that is going to be helping people connect to services and so on and so forth? I, I think that's important to determine, and I think especially in light of the fact that we were giving, uh, to Scope an enormous property that I've asked Mr. Faubel to put back on the agenda. It was item, I believe it was item, uh, I'm not gonna be able to remember the number, but he knows which one I mean, regarding the surplus firehouse. We have to have that back on because there was a recusal, but it was done in the meeting, and that, when you do it in the meeting, it's not on an agenda, so nobody knows about it. We very much appreciate any disclosures, but it has to be done where you can hit it, uh, so to speak. And finally, we have item number, I believe it is 13 or 14. No, it's a, yeah, you said 14. Uh, 14 caught my attention because it's a, it's an item that's proposed, um, it's a motion, Wesson for Corretts. Now, I didn't understand why it would be Wesson for Corretts, as opposed to Corretts for Corretts, since Corretts is right there, but maybe that was at the ti, I just don't know. Anyway, it's, it seems like a good one. It's an extension of time beyond the requirement of council action for the property at 411 through 439 South Hamill Road. Uh, yeah, they're getting a big extension. I don't know why, but, uh, good for them. And so that concludes my comments on those items, sir, and, um, if we could just simply have the item that I referenced from, uh, Scope put back on the agenda at some point, that would be great. Thank you.
Stay, Mr. Previn. Can you put his minute up there? Mr. Previn, your general public comment. Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn, do you wanna speak on general public comment? Then do it now. Yes. Right now. General, just general, general.
Ooh, sir, you're, you're testing my ability to organize all these thoughts at one time, but thank you, sir. Uh, yeah, I wanted to reach out because the city attorney has such an important role here at, uh, in Los Angeles. So they are, uh, both the masters to the legal proceedings here in the hall and all the neighborhood councils, but also they defend the bad actors who may, uh, veer off the Brown Act or the Public Record Act. So this has created some difficulty, even at our local level in Studio City, where we have, uh, sort of inexperienced, um, parliamentarians, for the record, who, who, who are trying but don't know the rule of the law. So we've reached out to various, the sort of the chain of command, and it's gone up from, uh, you know, the ordinary Darren Martinez and Elise Rudin, up to Mr. David Michelson, who, who does not seem to be, wanna be responsive, and obviously, Mr. Fuhr and Lila Kapoor are also just kind of running in the opposite direction. I think it's because they don't wanna grapple with what may be off the rails, but we should altogether put it on the rails, and I think that Mr. Faubel, who's obviously schooled in these matters, or one of the other seasoned Brown Act folks, should, should participate, come out to Studio City and have a seminar. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Walsh? Items, uh, 1, 6, 8, 9, uh, 11, and 12, you have 4 minutes, and then a minute for general public comment. So set the clock at 4 minutes. Mr. Englander.
Uh, um, as long as we've got, uh, 10 up and people are speaking on those various items, I just had 1 change. I can come back to it later or do it now.
Uh, why don't you do it later? Well, no, go ahead.
It's just a technical correction, uh, under the moving clause, therefore move the Department of Recreation and Parks. I'm adding "in consultation with Department of Aging." So, that's it. I'll give you that.
You have, I think it was 10, right?
Item 10, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 6, you're gonna spend $400,000 for nothing other than conducting negotiations. This concerns, uh, purchase of 14 new solid waste, uh, heavy-duty converters. In other words, shit. So, uh, it takes $400,000 of your tax money, read it, read it, everybody, to, uh, conduct the issue of shit. Number 8, this concerns DWP and stream analysis model. Well, we know stream analysis means wee-wee, so, uh, this one, uh, is a quarter of a million dollar, oh, $150,000 to $250,000. Does anybody read this shit besides me? I don't think so, cuz you never comment on it. Number 8, now we go to number 9, this is a Fenarc Studio, you've heard of them, onsite evaluation, compliance reports for family source centers. That means they take a, uh, rubber stamp and they keep hitting it, I, I guess, uh, 25,000, 100,000 times. Uh, this, again, nobody will, uh, up here will ask, "What are we getting for this money?" Because these are your campaign contributors that are, uh, that are involved in this. Now we go, uh, to number 11, this is Buscaino and Price. This is a reward leading to the, uh, okay, what we're having is a gru, a, a group that is raping, this is right here, I'm not making this up. Look at number 11. This is a group of felons that are raping people at MetroPCS stores. It's all planned. The LA Times doesn't do the story because, uh, the ti, uh, because, uh, their reporter here is gay, and the mayor tells him not to do it, uh, and then he flirts with them. Okay, apprehension and conviction responsible for a series of robberies and sexual assaults at MetroPCS stores. Maybe these cameras up here should go to a Metro PS, PCS store and ask. It's dangerous to go there. The stuff never appears on the agenda of the city council. It stays over, uh, at the, uh, uh, police. Why? And then we have a second, number 12. This is another series of robberies at cellphone stores. They don't say C, PCS here, but that, and that one is for a war, reward of $15,000. So I want the rapists to know, if you can control yourself, the re, and not rape people who go to the PCS store, uh, the reward will only be $15,000. Of course, anybody turns you in will be murdered. They'll be murdered. No one gives, uh, crap here about the PCS stores, about rape. They just sit here like a bunch of dummies, and they don't say one damn word. And I'm going to, uh, give you back your time, and I'll go into public comment. Yesterday, there was-
Give him a minute, give him a minute, Sharon. Wait, wait, Mr. Walsh. Okay, go ahead.
There was a major confrontation yesterday in public between Black Lives Matter and the mayor of Los Angeles, and all the scumbag media covered it up. Put in Black Lives Matter MTA board. The Black Lives Matter people came, they confronted the mayor as a racist, these blacks and Hispanics. This is at the MTA board. Now, they, they've torn out the video. There's no more video. You can listen to it on audio, and the mayor took his white Mexican ass and got, uh, Jewish ass, and ran out of the meeting, and it took 30 policemen, 30 policemen to quell the Black Lives Matter people. It's on the tape. This reminds me when I lived in Ethiopia. Nothing appeared in the press, and it was highly salicy allowed it. And here, everybody, including the press, sucks the mayor's cock.
Okay. So, madam clerk, I think that frees us up, even though, no, the, the, uh, monitor is correct now. I think that frees us up where we can vote on items 2, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. President, but, uh, the vote on item 10, since there's a technical correction, should be a separate vote. So would the council like to vote on 6, 8, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14 now, sir?
Yes, so let's, uh, uh, members, uh, no one's on the queue, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Corretts?
Mr. President, Mr. President, the next vote should be item 10, and it is a, uh, and there is a technical correction that was noted, sir.
So we'll vote on 10 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
One more, uh, one more thing, Mr. President. Uh, there is a request for item number 9 to, uh, go forth with, sir.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, Mr. Corretts? For a presentation. With some old friends.
Well, good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. Every summer, the LA Superior Court, the Museum of Tolerance, and Parents, Educators, Teachers, and Students in Action, otherwise known as PESA, provide youth juror training for a specialized teen court, focusing on bullying incidents rooted in prejudice and bias. There's a program called SHADES, which stands for Stop Hate and Delinquency by Empowering Students, and their goal is to train youth participants to serve as informed and effective jurors. Teen Court is an intervention program which provides selected juvenile offenders with the opportunity to be questioned, judged, and sentenced by a jury of their peers. The program diverse young people from the formal court system and promotes restorative justice throughout innovative sentencing. It's a great concept, and my, my nephew, who sometimes visits from New York, uh, was actually, uh, a teen court judge in New York City. It's a great program there as well. The Los Angeles Superior Court's Teen Court Program operates at over 30 LA County schools, and is the largest and fastest-growing network of teen juror justice in the country. Through the SHADES program, student jurors and their adult partners promote understanding of the negative impact of bias in the community, and advance hate crime and incident prevention through new community service sentencing. The Youth Juror Training Institute is a 5-day summer program where students are divided into groups of 30 to engage in a series of interactive activities and educational workshops led by a professional facilitator. The headquarters for the program is the Museum of Tolerance's Youth Action Lab, complete with media walls, anonymous voting devices, multipurpose rooms, and state-of-the-art audiovisual equipment. The program concludes, concludes with an actual trial concerning a SHADES-related case, and then during the school year, these trained jurors are able to sit on teen court juries administering justice in SHADES-related cases all over the city of Los Angeles. And although the training occurs in CD5, residents from all districts benefit because the cases come from all areas of the city of Los Angeles. And we have a few special guests here with us. Judge David Wesley, who's the primary creator of the SHADES program, and through his vision and insight, the program is successful in continuing to influence the youth of our community to be true ambassadors of tolerance and understanding. Linda Blanchay is a true visionary and is project coordinator of this program at the Museum of Tolerance, spends countless hours ensuring that the program is a success and impacts the lives of youth in our community. Speaking on behalf of the Museum of Tolerance, we'll be- Speaking on behalf of the Museum of Tolerance will be Rabbi Meyer May, who's the executive director of the Simon Wiesenthal Center, and Seymour Amster, who is a tireless advocate for intercultural tolerance, as the executive director of PESA, which ensures that the logistical aspect of the program occurs, and then during the school year arranges opportunities for the students to share what they have learned with other students at their schools. Scott Svancon, the president of the Los Angeles Community College District, is also involved in support for this program. And now I'd like to ask Judge David Wesley to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Corretts. Council President Wesson, members of the city council, thank you for having us here today. Let me tell you briefly why the judges of the Los Angeles Superior Court, the Museum of Tolerance, and PESA have come together, and I promise I will be brief. Somewhere in America, every hour, a hate crime is committed. Every day, eight black people, three white people, three gay people, three Jewish people, and one Latino person become victims of hate crimes. Every week, somewhere in America, a cross is burned. Why should we care? We care because this is our community. We care because a large percentage of these hate crimes, some of them in the form of bullying, occur in our middle schools and high schools, right here in Los Angeles. I was doing Teen Court for 15 years. I woke up one morning, I read the morning paper, and there was an article someone had written, "Kill the Jews," on the high school mirrors at Hamilton High School. That was my high school. That was the school my children went to. I began to look at what was happening in the other high schools in the city and the middle schools here in our community, and it was then that I became alarmed. That was 11 years ago. Since then, we have conducted trials using student jurors, trials involving middle-school children with Down Syndrome and autism being bullied in a school bathroom, children bullied because they were perceived to be gray, gay, transgender, Hispanic, or African-American. These are our children and our grandchildren. Every seven minutes, a child is bullied and adult intervention occurs in less than 4% of these incidents. Did you know that 75% of school shootings are linked to harassment and bullying by the shooter? We care because 1.6 million children ages 6 through 10 are bullied at least once a week and 160,000 students stay home from school every day for fear of being bullied. I could go on and on, but these are some of the reported statistics. Albert Einstein once said, "The world will not be destroyed by those that do evil, but by those that watch and do nothing." I know, but I'm going to keep talking.
Go right ahead, Your Honor. Please, go right ahead. We kiss up to judges here. Go right ahead.
And I will be short. Well, we are doing something. Teen Court and Shades are encouraging young people not to stand by and do nothing, but to speak out and prevent bullying and hate crimes and discourage criminal conduct in our communities, in their communities. More than 70 judges, like Judge Rosenblatt, who's here with me today, have devoted countless hours of their time and energy to these intervention programs, conducting trials and acting as mentors to troubled youth. So, have teachers throughout our county, representatives from the LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, probation officers, district attorneys, public defenders, your own city attorney's office, numerous bar associations, and volunteer attorneys. It is with their help that we take real cases out of the formal justice system and take them to trial before student jurors. We have over, as the councilman said, over 30 high schools. I think we have about 38 high schools right now, which have, some of which have courtrooms on their campus, like Van Nuys High School that has a courtroom, thanks to the active participation of Councilmember Martinez. Our teen courts now reach about 20,000 students a year and the students come from every council district in this city. We also use some of these same students who have volunteered to participate in five days of training at the Museum of Tolerance to hear these hate crime cases. These trials occur in real courtrooms or at the Museum of Tolerance. There is so much more I could tell you, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank you all for inviting us here today to recognize these efforts of all the people involved, dedicated judges, probation officers, teachers, lawyers, law enforcement volunteers, that are trying through their actions to make our community a better place to live and a safer community. We have provided each of you with a list of our teen court programs. We invite you to attend a session at any one of our teen courts or Shades trial, and we also, I think, have given you a video of it. Thank you again for having us here today.
Thank you, Judge Wesley. Now, we'd like to hear from Rabbi Meyer May, representing Museum of Tolerance.
Rabbi.
Mr. President, it's nice to see you. Good morning, members of the, of the city council. It is such an honor for the Simon Wiesenthal Center to be located in Los Angeles. When we started the Wiesenthal Center almost 40 years ago, there were no major Jewish organizations in California. Everything was based in New York. And the Wiesenthal Center came to LA, opened in LA, in this great city of Los Angeles, and the Museum of Tolerance ensued. To hear how the Museum of Tolerance is being deployed in the community by such luminaries as His Honor, who just spoke before, and Seymour, to deal with the issues in our community in the grassroots level, in the hands-on level, to make a difference, to deal with bias, is something that just warms my heart and gives me further inspiration to do our work. I have to tell you that I have very little responsibility for the program that you're honoring today. My colleague Linda Blanchet, who is here, Linda, please come up, and Beverly LeMay, who are here, they're the people that actually deserve the credit, deserve the recognition. They do this work every single day. Fighting bias is an ongoing problem. Everyone knows about it. Race is a real issue still in America, and we are pleased at the Wiesenthal Center and Museum of Tolerance to be at the forefront in the educational process, to train young people. And I might tell you, Mr. President, you know the Wiesenthal Center for many years and the Museum of Tolerance, you were our champion in Sacramento as well.
Thank you for saying that.
Every, every year, more than 300, more than 150,000 kids go through the Museum of Tolerance for a fully-guided three-hour experience. It's probably the hardest-working museum, one of the hardest-working museums in this area on the subject of bias and hate in the country, and certainly in California, and we thank all of you for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to hear from Seymour Amster, the executive director of PESA.
Thank you, councilmembers. Each of you have been given a booklet that explains the program. We also have given an extra copy for your staffers because we expect many of our teen court students to be future staffers. To stop hate and delinquency in our city, we need to be a team, and we are a team. We are a team composed of parents who understand the need for their children not to hate. We are a team composed of educators. There are no greater educators in our community than our judicial officers, who every day deal with the problems in our community, but in their judicial capacity, they can only be reactive. Through this program, we give them the opportunity to use their knowledge and experience learned while being on the bench to influence our children. Teachers, without the dedicated teachers involved with this program, we could never accomplish all that we have and all that we will accomplish. And students, the wonderful gift we are given, the opportunity to interact, learn, and educate those who are our future. Yes, we are parents, educators, teachers, and students in action, stopping hate and delinquency as a team. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you.
Well, thank you to all the folks here responsible for implementing this incredible program. And now I'd like to present certificates to some of the folks here for the great work that they do.
Mr. Bloomingfield, in fact, Mr. Corretts, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield at this time.
Well, I just wanted to thank Mr. Corretts for bringing this forward. This is a great program, and, you know, it's, as you mentioned, it's in all the districts. I thought I was special because it's in my district and it's great. Thanks. And so, I just wanted, just wanted to recognize it and thank you and, you know, I've known a number of you for a long time, especially Seymour for a long time here, and Jerry and the whole gang. So, thank you for what you're doing and for making it happen, and Mr. Corretts for bringing it forward.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you. It's good to see you, Rabbi. Good to see you, Judge Wesley. Keep up the good work. I want, before we go to the next presentation, want to go to item number one. Now, I do have cards on one, but those items that you spoke, you signed up to speak on, those items are going to be continued until September 16th. So, the items are 1E, 1D, and 1C. We will continue those items until September 16th.
Mr. President, the department also requests to continue 1F to September 16th, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. So, why don't we vote on the remaining?
Oh, and also, item I, sir.
What was that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the department requests that item I also be continued to September 16th, sir.
Okay, so without objection, but I just want to make sure, Mr. Hand, we have continued your item to the 16th, but if you wanted to speak, you still could. And I have a Ms. Moreno. We've continued your item to the 16th as well, and you can talk. There's a gentleman in the back with a vest on. You can have a conversation with him. So, if you're fine, we're going to, see this gentleman right here? That's who you need to talk to. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining.
Mr. President, just for clarification, council is voting on the remaining, which is A, M, O, and P, R, S, and V, sir.
Thank you for the clarification. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. Wizar, for a very important presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, and we're very excited to be here again as we recognize and celebrate the 2016 Nisei Week Japanese Festival, one of Los Angeles' most treasured traditions and marked its 76th anniversary this year. My wife Rochelle and family had a fantastic time at this year's grand parade, which happened this past weekend. The parade and the festival as a whole are such a wonderful and rich cultural experience for all of us. And today, we welcome to the chambers two members of the Nisei Week Court, and also along with Board Member Helen Ota. I want to thank the Nisei Week Foundation, who put on this great festival each and every year. And I want to thank Helen and all the board for their continued efforts to bring to us one of the oldest traditions in the city of Los Angeles, cultural traditions in the city of Los Angeles, and perhaps one of the longest-running ethnic festivals in all of the United States. This festival started back in 1934, where we had a much larger Japanese community here in not only downtown, but it spread throughout the East Side and the San Gabriel Valley. And here in the city of Los Angeles, Japanese culture and history and its importance to our city is inmeasurable, and nowhere is that more evident than in Little Tokyo today. And today, Little Tokyo faces a number of challenges as it, the revaluation of all of downtown puts additional pressures on Little Tokyo to continue its tradition and preserve its history here in the city of LA. But what's great about what I see is that we have strong leaders there who continue to work with the city and many other institutions to preserve that history. For me personally, this festival is special because growing up in Boyle Heights, just on the other side of the river of Little Tokyo, I worked in Little Tokyo throughout my high school years, and one of my greatest life mentors is a Japanese businessman who offered me a job at a local video store and gave me great advice when I needed it the most as a young boy growing up in the streets of Boyle Heights. I also delivered the Raffu Shimpu, the local Japanese newspaper, to many Japanese-American residents who at the time resided in Boyle Heights. And those memories are inmeasurable to me as I met a lot of Japanese-Americans and Japanese living in Boyle Heights, and we talked a lot about both our cultural experiences here in the United States. And beyond all that Nisei Week gives us is a time, not only as a time-honored tradition, it also gives us the opportunity to thank Little Tokyo community for being such an important part of the cultural fabric of our great city. So, we say thank you to everyone involved with Little Tokyo and this festival. So, now I would like to present the 2016 Nisei Week Queen and First Princess, Queen Jaclyn Hidemi Tomita, welcome. And First Princess Megan Tomiko Ono.
Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations.
And so, if I could present at this moment Helen Ota, who is a board member for the Nisei Week Foundation. Welcome, Helen.
Thank you, Councilmember Wizar, and thank you, President, Council President Wesson, for having us here. On behalf of the Nisei Week Foundation, Board of Directors, its volunteers, and of course, our president this year, David Teragawa, who unfortunately could not be here today, thank you very much to all of you in the city of Los Angeles for your continued support of the 76th Nisei Week Japanese Festival. We had a wonderful festival, and as Councilmember mentioned, he participated in the parade with his family, and it's always a joy to see him participate. And this year's court is going to be very busy through next August, participating in various events in our community. They'll also be traveling to Japan, Nagoya, our sister city, for their festival in October. So, we're looking forward to celebrating another Japanese festival with our sister city, Nagoya. They'll also be traveling to Hawaii and San Francisco as well, representing the greater Southern California Japanese and Japanese-American community. So, once again, thank you very much, and I'd like to give the floor quickly to our Queen and First Princess to just say a few words.
Well, thank you, and please, Queen and First Princess, come forward and welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jaclyn Hidemi Tomita, and it is my privilege to be this year's Nisei Week Queen. I recently graduated from San Diego State University, and I'm 24 years old, and I am sponsored by the San Fernando Valley Japanese-American Community Center. Thank you for having us here today. It is such an honor.
And congratulations. First Princess.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Megan Tomiko Ono, and I am honored to be this year's First Princess. I'm 23 years old, and I graduated from California State University, Long Beach, and thank you once again for having us here. We're excited to represent the city of Los Angeles, and thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause.
So, thank you very much, Mr. President, and on behalf of the city, the city council and our mayor, I'd love to present this resolution to the court, along with the foundation, to thank you on behalf of the city for the wonderful work you do to continue the cultural experience here, the Japanese culture experience here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Again, thank you, Mr. Wizar. I'd like to call up Jacqueline Richardson for general public comment. Ms. Richardson, come on up. Ms. Richardson, come on up. Mr. Bonin, did you want to make an announcement?
Actually, Mr. President, on Wednesday, the council voted unanimously to approve item number 25, which was Council File 16-0910.
Yes, sir.
That was the MOU and litigation settlement in the ARSAC lawsuit. Because there was no formal motion calling for the approval of the MOU, and out of an abundance of caution, I'd asked that we reconsider item 25 and vote on it again. So, therefore, I move the council reconsider item 25, the ARSAC MOU and settlement of litigation.
Okay. But I'm gonna go to Ms. Richardson, and then we'll come right back. Okay.
I don't know, Baca, but by reasoning, these issues can be ascertained. The Mexican men in his organization are not beating up Mexican men. By the same token, the black men in his organization are not beating up black men. Then, it is the other people beating up the prisoners, not black and not Mexican. If Baca had allowed Mexican or black men and/or black men to beat up prisoners, Baca would have been told on immediately or years ago. Comparatively speaking, how good is Baca's reputation? I assume it's good, and I assume that his work is outstanding. Then, why is Baca being picked on? Why is he being picked on?
Thank you very much. Okay, so now, let's vote on Mr. Bonin's request on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now move approval of item 25, Council File Number 16-0910, the MOU and litigation settlement between the city and the Department of Airports and the Alliance for Regional Solution to Airport Congestion.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll.
Mr. President, we need a second for that. Would that...
Mr. Bloomingfield seconded it. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes. Can that be forthwith, please? Forthwith?
Forthwith. Okay, let's go to special one. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health issued a warning against the use of spice, a synthetic cannabinoid drug. The proliferation of synthetic cannabinoid drugs, which is the likely cause of recent overdose reports in the downtown Los Angeles area, is a health emergency creating the need to take immediate action. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of the motion.
Okay, so now, our first vote is on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Mr. Englander, I'm sure I'm gonna get a card or two on this. You want to do the cards first, or you want to do them at the end? Okay. I thought I saw Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. What they're doing now is a special. Nobody knew about it till a half an hour ago, so they throw it on the agenda, and if we didn't run up there and sign up, then we don't get to talk about it. This is, these are the people who talk about their love of the First Amendment. First Amendment of what, Russia?
Let's stay on the subject.
Well, you stay on the subject. This isn't the subject. HollywoodHighlands.org wants to know, I want you to read the entire agenda item so the rest of Los Angeles can find out about it. The people who voted for you, the people who watch television, because this is a very, very important issue. This concerns narcotics, and you're sweeping it under the rug.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn. I'm trying to grapple with what the information is in this. I don't understand why it was presented in live session after the general public comment. I'm confused, but I do appreciate the spirit of a dangerous drug being on the street in the L.A. County Public Health, who are a generally reputable group trying to take some action. I just can't tell what action they're taking here. Here it is. So, the city attorney is going to work with Fire Department to draft an ordinance to prohibit the sale. So, that is not something that is urgent, but they're gonna do it. Good. And they're gonna report on strategies to work on this. And then, we're gonna express some support for Governor Brown's SB 1036. And so, the only objection that I have, because I have not had a chance to study it, sir, and I'm sure nobody else in the public has either, is to the late-breaking notice and agendizing in this fashion, which attracts no possibility to fully conclude. I mean, there are many different substances. Spice is one that I have not heard of. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Englander.
Or Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Weezer.
Open it. Okay. I'll go ahead and open it.
Go ahead.
So, thank you very much for that, Mr. President, and colleagues, on this urgent matter. Last Friday, 38 people were transported from Skid Row to the hospital. Monday, 14, mass overdosed. And so, we have this drug on our street that people are manufacturing, this synthetic drug. And unfortunately, what they've done is they're taking advantage of those most vulnerable in society by making a cheap, not marijuana, but they're calling it that, synthetic drug that's wrecking havoc in our communities. With that, though, before I get started and go through all of that, we're gonna bring some folks to the table, and I know Mr. Weezer wants to ask them some questions as well. We've got somebody here from the Police Department, as well as the Fire Department.
You please come forward.
Deputy Chief Joe Castro, as well as Commanding Officer Don Graham, Chief Don Graham, soon to be. Thank you very much. And what we're gonna ask you to do, if you could, is describe the chaos that you all witnessed, and what you've seen, and what this drug can do. Before you do that, I want to let you know that we did bad bath salts here, thanks to Councilmember Coretts here a number of years ago, and as well as the state and the FDA that banned spice. Unfortunately, what people have done is they've changed the chemical composition of what makes up spice to get around those laws. And what we're hoping to do now, beyond just banning that here in the city of Los Angeles, is also ask the governor to sign the bill that's currently sitting on his desk, to not ban the chemicals necessarily, but ban the outcome, the reaction, the effect of what these chemicals are having on the brain, and anything that causes that, to ban that as well. And so, if you can, walk us through, and actually, before you do that, let me turn it over to Councilmember Weezer, and then I'll let him...
Yes, thank you.
...take it back over to you. Thank you.
Mr. Englander, and thank you, colleagues, for allowing us to take up this issue as an urgency item. And as you know, as Mr. Englander stated, not only have we seen people hospitalized, but possibly the death of one person. This is something that doesn't only affect Skid Row, but it has, it can affect wide areas of the city. This is one of the cheapest ways of people possibly wanting to get high, and when you have a situation like Skid Row and desperate conditions, it has affected this area more than possibly other areas. It can affect other areas. But as Mr. Englander stated, we are asking today that we ask the city attorney to close some loopholes in our own local laws about the results of the combination of several types of chemicals that have created new types and new batches of these drugs. We're also asking the governor to sign some legislation on his desk right now that would help us here locally. But in the meantime, what we have done, and we'll hear from our panel today, is that the mayor's office, along with Marquise Harris Dawson's office and some service providers working with LAPD and the Fire Department, have been doing some outreach efforts to inform people about the dangers of this type of spice. And we want to ensure that we not only do as much as we can to provide that outreach, fix legislation where we can, but at the end of the day, the overall target and goal is to ensure that we're doing this and approaching this as a health issue and not necessarily a law enforcement one. We want to ensure that people in Skid Row who are already facing desperate situations, that the victims are not further penalized as we approach this, and that's what we're focusing on, how we keep this away from them and focus on the manufacturers and the sellers and those people who are taking advantage of some individuals who are already in a very desperate situation. So, thank you for your work, and thank you, Mr. Englander, for bringing the urgency that this issue requires. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the council. Thank you, councilmembers, Weezer, Englander, for having us here today. Skid Row is no stranger to calls for overdose. Ambulances and police cars consistently go in and out, attending to what is the most vulnerable of our population in Skid Row. And because of that level of vulnerability, the attraction to escape from that world by using controlled substances is prevalent in that community. But Friday was different. Friday morning started with a series of overdose calls that were coming out to both the Los Angeles Police Department and the Los Angeles Fire Department. And the concentration of those calls got so high that it required the decision by the Fire Department's management to establish a forward command post at Winston and San Pedro, so that they can bring the resources, ambulance resources and medical resources, directly to the epicenter of that problem, which seemed to be emanating from the area of Fifth and San Pedro, which is historically an area where spice has been distributed. I went back over the statistics that we have in Central Division, and 85% of the arrests that have been made for the dealing of spice, which at this time is a misdemeanor in the California Health and Safety Code, have been made in the intersection of Fifth and San Pedro. As a police captain, I responded out to that location to offer my assistance to the Fire Department. And if I could just take a moment to acknowledge the Herculean efforts of the Los Angeles Fire Department, their coordination, their communication with us, and their willingness to get in there and save every single life that they could, it was absolutely gratifying to work with our brothers in red and make that happen that morning. So, we were assigned a support role to them, but I think the most significant support role that we were assigned that morning was to try to mitigate the effects of what we were seeing. Just the amount of apparatus that was brought to that concentration of area was enough to shatter the peace in that area, and the normal goings-on in that area was brought to a very heightened level of chaos, as people were wondering what so many ambulances were doing in the area and trying to react to that peace. So, I immediately engaged our reset unit, our bicycle unit, our footbeat units, and our senior lead officers to engage in a block-by-block hotel-motel SRO missions, and we engaged our community partners to try to put the message out that we are seeing a bad batch of spice. And while there are people who are sitting here at this table that are much more educated than I am in the chemistry, I can tell you that the insidiousness of this particular drug is the price point. $1 for two joints for an average high of six hours, by far the cheapest option for a mind-altering situation. And as the councilmembers have indicated, the changing chemistry in order to stay flexible enough to get around American-controlled substance laws is also part of that problem. Unfortunately, what our intelligence has discovered on the street is that people who have been on spice for quite a long time develop a resistance to that, and so that their high is less affected. And so, as time moves forward, the dealers in the street feel a need to augment this already chemical compound with common household chemicals like Raid, Brake Fluid, Febreeze, and continue to treat the already-treated potpourri, which is what is sprayed by this synthetic chemical, before they roll the cigarettes. So, at any time, the changing chemicals mixed with the changing availability of this augmentation is what could potentially cause a chemical reaction that could cause the symptoms that we were seeing that morning. We saw a distinctive drop in our radio call responses over the weekend, and we had hoped that the message had permeated significantly in the community to understand that there was a bad batch of spice floating around. Unfortunately, Monday morning, the radio call load ramped up again into that severe level, causing the Fire Department to reestablish its command post. So, we continued our outreach efforts, and what we hoped didn't happen was that the message that got permeated was there was a bad batch. We've gotten rid of that over the weekend, and now we've got fresh, good, new stuff that came in on Monday. And so, that's what we're trying to change our messaging now to, it's all a bad batch. There's no good batch of spice. The other messaging that we feel is very important is the Police Department is not just for the community in Skid Row, but for the greater Los Angeles community, and that is, the way to make people safe from a spice overdose is to bring them home. If you have a loved one on Skid Row, and you know where to find them, bring them home. And if you need help trying to find them, contact the Central Division of the Los Angeles Police Department, and we will do our best to help you connect up with that loved one and bring them home. Chief?
Mr. President, esteemed members of the council, Joe Castro, Commander of Emergency Operations for LAFD. On those three specific dates, we had 85 patients in probably a two-square-block area, 85 patients of which 62 of them were transported to the hospital, perhaps one fatality. That is indeed a crisis that required the collective efforts of not only LAPD and LAFD, but the entire city family. Subsequent to that, we have embarked on a task force that will kind of examine the entire emergency management continuum, which focuses on mitigation, prevention, response, and recovery, and in bringing into that task force not only members from the city family, but L.A. County Department of Health, Mental Health, and other entities to best address this. But I think the most important thing to understand is how much the Fire Department both appreciates and supports the motion to implement yet another element, which is to make it illegal and prosecute the suppliers and manufacturers of this drug. It's only gonna get worse, and I could, it's absolutely plausible in the foreseeable future to have a similar incident with 300, 400, or 500 patients. And it's like the captain said, this kind of despicable exploitation of our most vulnerable and fragile community there at Skid Row is something that absolutely has to be addressed, and we fully support and appreciate the motion that is put forth.
Mr. Busta Ina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just disgusted, colleagues. I'm disgusted that we continue to talk about these drug lords, these thugs, who continue to take advantage of our most vulnerable in Skid Row and throughout the city of Los Angeles. Now, this council struggled and wrestled with the fact that we needed an ordinance in place, 5611, that will shut down these tents and encampments during the day. That's not happening today. In fact, I was just on San Pedro Street, where these encampments and these tents remain up during daylight hours. And you know what's happening within these tents and encampments? These knuckleheads, these thugs, are dealing in these encampments. So, yes, I support looking at ways to adjust and address our current ordinances and work with the state, work with our city attorney, but I'm fired up, and I'm frustrated and disgusted that yet again, our most vulnerable, those who need our love and our help and our support the most are being taken advantage by these knuckleheads. So, I encourage the departments at the table to get out there and work with our resources, our outreach teams, sanitation, law enforcement, Fire Department, to shut this crap down. our outreach teams, sanitation, law enforcement, Fire Department, to shut this crap down. Shut it down now. Because yet, hundreds upon hundreds, and we're using our public safety resources to get called out to twenty, thirty people who are overdosing on this crap. We gotta step it up, guys, because people are losing their lives, and they're being taken advantage of these knuckleheads, these thugs.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagno. Mr. Englander, or Mr. Weezer, you wanna wrap this up?
Thank you for that impassioned speech, Joe. And it's shameful that we all have to come back to the table over and over and over to come up with pieces of legislation and ordinances to go after people who constantly prey on and take advantage of others. It's shameful that we have people living on the street at all. On any given day in the city of Los Angeles, 25,000 people are living on the street. Twenty-five hundred of those are children. Another 2,500 of those are veterans. And you can imagine, and I was talking to Donnie Graham earlier this morning, the chaos that they walked into. You can imagine they're already scared. Many of them have developmental disabilities. Many of them have emotional trauma. Many of them have drug and alcohol addiction. Many of them have mental illness, and they're living in squalor. So, you can imagine, when you have dozens of police officers, firefighters, big fire trucks rolling in, blaring their sirens, coming into that type of situation that's already unstable. You can imagine the chaos, the war scene, the feelings going through, not just them, but the social workers who are already on site. To watch people flaring their arms and flipping out in the street, to watch others foaming in the mouth and running around, to watch others hallucinating and chasing themselves. And then you can imagine the children that are watching this, and how scared they already are living on the street, and this is all going around them. So, I thank you for your passion, all of you, and your partnership, Mr. Weezer. And I know, we've talked on the phone every day since this happened. We've had many communications, and you've been dead-set on cracking down on this. And as a Chair of Public Safety, I honor not only that this is your district, that you've stepped up to bring people together on this, but this is happening everywhere. This is being sold on high school campuses. This is being brought to parties. This is too simple to get a hold of, and people are taking advantage of others. So, I urge you to vote yes, but we need to do more. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Thank you all very much. And again, thank you, Mr. Englander, and thank you, Mr. Buscagno, for really bringing out the passion that we feel about this. And, you know, we had a similar incident happen back in April, and when we thought we were fixing things then, and finally, whether it was a good batch or not, or a bad batch, you know, to get to this level again here and see it happen again, we have to ask ourselves if we are going to see it happen again in the near future, to the level that we saw it this past weekend. And so, I think this is an opportunity for us to, as Mr. Buscagno said, step up and do more. One of the things that we are asking our city attorney to do is to look at other cities and what they have done. Some cities have partnered with federal law enforcement to look at the supply chain and to focus on the manufacturers, so that we are coordinating in a much better fashion, so that we stop the supply chain where we need to. And obviously, as us having here in the city of L.A. the largest concentration of homeless individuals in the country, those predators who want to prey upon people and their vulnerabilities, their addictions, coming to Skid Row is an obvious place for them to come. So, not only are we fixing loopholes in our own local legislation, we're asking the state government to sign legislation on their desk, but we're also asking our local law enforcement to work with federal officials to examine this in a deeper fashion. So, thank you for your work, and hopefully, through the work we do today and our continued efforts, this will be the last time that we see an overdose of any drug on Skid Row in any time in the near future. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote on this item. If you'd please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with, per Mr. Englander's request. Madam... And again, thank you all for assembling so quickly. Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, I wanna quickly announce that tonight at dusk, we will be having a Movies in the Park located at 2803 Rainier Avenue. That's Rainier Park. We have a great time. There are hot dogs, and hamburgers, and popcorn, and candy. We have great raffle prizes, bicycles, and skateboards, and basketballs, and things of that nature. The movie tonight is an animated feature, The Good Dinosaur. It's a great place to be, to meet your neighbors, so we're inviting all of the families to come out tonight at dusk at 2803 Rainier Avenue for Movies in the Park. The movie will be The Good Dinosaur. Members, any other... Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you. A lot of good things happening in CD 10 throughout the summer, Mr. President. Congratulations to you and your staff. Colleagues, and those watching on Channel 35, Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council putting together a street fair tomorrow, Danker in Athens. Tomorrow's gonna kick off at 10:00 a.m. We'll have a booth set up. We're bringing in coffee. They have coffee with the councilmen to address some of the quality life issues and city services. So, again, Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, Danker in Athens, tomorrow kicks off at 10:00 a.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, members, if all could, in the council chambers, if all would please rise... Everyone, please rise for adjourning of Mr. Krikorian. Go right ahead, sir. Under announcements?
Yes, one other announcement, Mr. President. This weekend, the city celebrates its 235th birthday, and events will take place at El Pueblo, including a walk that begins at 6:30 a.m. from the San Gabriel Mission to El Pueblo, a bike ride that begins at 7:30 from San Gabriel Mission to El Pueblo, and then there will be a ceremonial walk beginning at 9:45 a.m. from Union Station into El Pueblo. And the official program will begin at 10:00 a.m. There will be birthday cake, and entertainment, and other great things happening at El Pueblo to celebrate the city's birthday. Everyone's welcome to attend.
The city's looking good for over 200 years.
Not too bad. Not too bad.
Not too shabby. Any other announcements? Okay, now we'll do adjourning motions. I wanna look to my right side. Mr. Weezer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, it's with great sadness that I ask us to adjourn in memory of the father of my chief of staff, Paul Habib, who passed away a few days ago. Myed Habib passed away on August 14th at the age of 74. Myed was born during World War II in Cairo, Egypt, on October 15th, 1941. He was the fifth child out of six siblings. He graduated from Cairo University in 1963 with a Bachelor of Science in Chemical Engineering. He immigrated to Montreal, Canada in 1965, and attended McGill University, where he received his MBA. He met his wife, Jean Habib, in Montreal, and after starting a family together, they decided to emigrate from Montreal and bring the family to Los Angeles. And those of you who know my chief of staff, Paul Habib, I often say that it is his short time that he spent in Canada as to why he is a huge hockey fan. They drove from Montreal to Los Angeles and arrived here on Year's Eve in 1978. Myed Habib spent 30 years working in both the United States and Canada as a chemist for several large pharmaceutical laboratories, providing research, development, and quality control. However, after a prolonged period of unemployment in the 1990s, Myed decided he needed to start over and find another way to provide for his family. He found work as a taxi driver. After several years, he saved up and purchased his own taxi, and he spent the next 19 years either driving or managing his taxi cab. But Myed Habib was defined by his love of people. He loved to be around people and loved to help people. He was as kind and generous as he was loud and boisterous. He loved learning about the different cultures here in Los Angeles, and was always looking to find commonality between people. He looked for an opportunity to help those in need regardless of his own financial circumstances. His kind and outgoing personality provided him a life filled with friends, family, and love. He is survived by two brothers, his son Paul, and his grandchildren Nathan and Franklin Habib. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him, and at this time, we, in CD 14 in the city of L.A., certainly express our deepest condolences to Paul Habib, who certainly, as my chief of staff, I see the commitment that he has to the city, and I think he has often talked about the love that his dad had given to him about being able to have the opportunities they did in this country, and has often expressed that at his way of giving back by working for the city of L.A. So, to Paul Habib and his family, and to Mr. Habib Myed, rest in peace and God bless. Thank you.
I'm continuing to look to my right side. Now, I'm looking to the left side, Mr. Bloomingfield's side. I do not see any... Members, have a good weekend. This meeting is adjourned.